Begin with the roll call.
Councilman Daley.
Did you say my name?
President.
Councilman Popescu.
Here.
Mayor Prottempery-Duper.
Present.
Mayor Rigsby.
Here.
Councilman Nardis absent. There is a quorum.
Thank you. We will begin, as usual, with an invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Prottempery-Duper. Please stand.
There he is. Your father has been thinking again for long. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, foundation, and the right to justice.
We had a closed session. Is there any report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council received a report on a potential litigation matter as shown in the agenda. There's no action to report at this time.
Thank you. Are there any added or deleted items?
No, sir.
Thank you. Time for oral reports. Here's your chance. No takers. Okay. For the public? I was doing eye contact with the public. He indicated no. So conflicts of interest will be dealt with if they arise, as they arise. The consent calendar, are there any items you want to pull, or would someone make a motion to approve? Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimously. It's approved. No old business, new business, item number nine, a confirming action agreement between the city and the VA for fire services. You can short circuit it if you want.
It's a short PowerPoint. Let's take all three of them in one motion. Okay, all set out. Actually, it's just a chance to give you a little bit of history, so as we all move forward, we might remember, and these things do get lost over time, but...
It's unfortunate Kevin's not here to watch this.
Yes. So the VA's fire services agreement. I've been digging into the history of this for several months now, and have understood over time that that agreement really was truly a... It was a combination of a fire services agreement as well as an economic impact mitigation fee. Reading through, I found back in 1974, the economic impact study found that once that construction was complete and those 37 acres were taken over by the VA, 53 percent of the city would essentially be assessed non-exempt, you know, exempt from taxes. So that clearly created the nexus for that economic impact mitigation. At the time, they were looking at those need for services for fire services. The department really didn't meet the demands of the VA. They made some, city made some investments. The biggest one was, or the ultimate goal was to get us down from an ISO rating of eight to an ISO rating of six. Now, ISO is the insurance services office. So all of our property insurance, your home, commercial, the rates based up on what's called an ISO rating in a city. Today, we're an ISO rating of four. But at the time, say, for perspective, a nine out of 10 is very poor. We're a nine out in our Ritchie Canyon element where we have a long response and very little infrastructure and no water. So that gives you an idea of what nine is, but they required a minimum of six.
So to, sorry to interrupt, but to get our insurance rates, Laura, we just got to get you down to like a two?
A three is probably fairly reachable for us. Two would, that would be some... Yeah, I would, I would, a two's probably a cost that, it would be some work. But anyway, to do that, we purchased a ladder truck, another pumper, to achieve 4,000 gallon per minute capacity. Also, the city, their prevention, put in a fire hydrant testing. They enhanced our prevention program. Now, the VA, as part of that project, put in the 3.2 million gallon tank. And also, the duck ponds at the time, were not just duck ponds. They were also part of the water capacity needed to meet the fire protection demands of the VA Medical Center. Since then, we've put in better infrastructure, bigger pipe, the system, and multiple connections, so there's redundancy in our system. So you're seeing those water ponds starting to disappear for structures and buildings, but it's been mitigated by the additional water infrastructure. So all those elements are part of what makes your ISO rating, including our dispatch services. So both parties agreed that, okay, this fire services agreement would be that chosen mitigation tool. At the time, they looked at a couple, a couple instruments or a couple methodologies. One actually would have far exceeded what Lumalanda University and Medical were contributing. So they went to another model, which essentially was looking at the replacement costs. And at the time, the VA was 72,500, and the university and medical center combined were 88,399. So that made the VA hospital an 82 percent factor. So when you took the $60,000 contributed at that time by the medical center, that was some cash and some services. They put the 82 percent on that, and 49.2 was the first agreement value. Now, since that time, over the last almost 40 years, it's simply been CPI increases, you know, little, little, you know, 1 percents, 2 percents, and we've gone through the years. Now, what do they get for that fire services agreement? Well, the requirements are a first alarm assignment of in no less than five minutes, two engine companies, and a chief officer, and six personnel. And that's our minimum staffing, is that three of. So we meet their first alarm response assignment. Also, a second alarm assignment within 18 minutes. There's two aerial trucks, nine to 12 personnel, additional chief officer. And really what that gets you is they want to see the ability to deploy advanced two large diameter hose lines. So that two two-and-a-half inch lines, that probably represents about 500 to 600 gallon per minute capability in a commercial building. So those are pretty standard for a commercial response on the building the size of the VA. Of those, the second alarm, we can only fill out the additional aerial device. The others would come from our automatic aid partners. 261 Redlands would be the next truck, 214 from Colton, the next engine, and 231 San Bernardino City. So that, those stations fill out that second alarm assignment to the VA. Additionally, we do their annual fire hydrant testing. I think we're good for the next. So we had Eric Johnson from Costs, Revenue Specialists, who's done, doing our other fee analysis in the city, come up with a methodology and analyze this situation. So what he has recommended is a solution that really considers the fire department budget, the apparatus replacement expense, and the economic impact of that 37 acres essentially being taken off of the tax rolls. So we took a five-year annual call volume, roughly is almost 41 calls a year to the VA complex, and that equals 1.47 percent of our activity.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
The purpose of this review was because the prior agreement was getting old and the model was outdated?
That's correct.
And was this at our initiative or their initiative?
No, very good question. This was the VA's. We do five-year agreements, a one-year and four add-ons. And every five-year agreement, there would be a little bit of question, well, why do we do this? And I think they explain it locally to the contracting office in Long Beach that really helps them understand, hey, where we are in other places in the nation, or big metropolitan areas, where we're the little fish in a big sea, not one of the big fish in a small sea. And additionally, there are many times on federal installations where there's the full weight of the fire department, the federal government pays for, they don't see it in their hospital budget. It's just an element, and it exists. So they would historically have that discussion internally. We are up for another five-year agreement right now, or a multi-year agreement, and the same pushback came again. So they asked, you know, they're asking for more accountability from the contracting office, from DC. We need to know what this is based on. So that had me pull out all that history again and go through and explain, okay, I can tell you why. I can tell you what it's been and why, how we've gotten to where we are. Whether that's the best thing today or not, I don't know. I'm worried that if we do get out of study, there might be a cost increase, and we're trying to continue to work together. The VA's feeling was, we get that, we get there's a chance of that, but honestly, from a legal and a contracting perspective, we really need the framework to be able to explain why that is. And quite frankly, it's much better to, every five years, rerun the formula versus try to explain because it's always been. So they were willing to take that and add this formula to it. There was some discussion up to the last moment, which I didn't know if we were going to hear from them, but at the 11th and a half hour, they did. It necessitated an urgency signature by the mayor so that they didn't risk an interruption in their service.
Two minutes before I left on vacation.
I found him in the front yard of his house on his way, on his way out of town, but we got it done.
So Nardis paid 3, $235,000 a year.
It's important to talk about what were they, what were they paying?
$190.00. It's about a $44,000 increase from the past methodology.
So do they regret asking for...
Federal government, they didn't regret my money?
They didn't say. They just told me they were willing to follow the new, the new study. Now, what the mayor did sign, and we need your action on, was a six-month agreement with the intent on using that period to now work out the multi-year deal. I have since received that request that we provide them the bid or the pricing for, you know, the rest of the six months, so the rest of one year and four multi-year deals. We were having some internal discussion, hey, what does that, what does that look like? Where historically, we would take some estimated CPI from year to year and add that percentage. Where in this scenario, you know, I don't get a chance, if I'm going to give them a cost for five years, I don't get a chance to rerun the formula every year. We did call Eric, and his recommendation was, well, we probably know personnel. I mean, we have one additional year left on our labor agreement, and we can make a pretty good estimate, you know, in a couple of years after that, likely what that range will be. So his recommendation was take, take the personnel element of our costs, put that in, and then redo the economic impact analysis again on the every five-year mark, so.
I've got a hard question. One last question. How do we factor in the new building?
So the new building is actually being leased by the federal government. So it was a private developer, a private owner who was a...
So we get that, we got that capital improvement from the developer?
Correct. Yeah, they pay the property tax. They pay for the open impact fee and fine check fee, so they're just like a business building.
Now, there is...
We just got to hope that they don't have an increased workload there for you guys.
Yeah, yeah, I have, that, you know, a little bit for us. I do have a bigger concern on what that law enforcement impact will be down in that, in that area, but...
Well, I could also see, because it's going to function similar to the FMO, right? Potentially, you could have a lot of ambulance rides to ER.
Yeah, there could be those. Now, it's an interesting point, though, Conrad, and you can confirm. It's my understanding that agreement with the private ownership is such that the federal government in 30 years assumes ownership. Is that...
No.
No, that didn't happen that way?
It reverts back to the private owner.
It reverts back to the private owner? Okay, so it never becomes owned by the government? So anyway, that's pretty much the end of my report there unless there's any other, any other question.
So is there any action you're asking for? Confirming my signature?
We need a, we need a confirmation of your signature on that agreement.
My vogee gives your signature, gives you a signature. So it's not an movable item. It's not really an actionable item. It's just...
Well, it's a motion and a second to confirm?
Yeah. So I make the motion to confirm the action.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion? Is there... Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sounds like four ayes. So that's approved. Item number 10, declare surplus, a fire engine.
Actually, the next two items really dovetail together since they were two separate actions. They are two different staff reports, but you'll see they largely dovetail together. This had initially been some discussion at the budget time, but there was some desire to understand what our apparatus replacement schedule scheme, how we analyze and do those things. And so we wanted to bring it back and discuss it and kind of give you a little bit of education on that cycle. So what we follow, what we've adopted is a 20-year life expectancy. Now, that's our goal. Sometimes you, agencies don't attain it, and often you go past it. I think our history is we usually go past our expected, our expected and exceed that, which is the case tonight. I did, sometimes we ask, hey, how does that compare to the industry or what's going on around us? I did, we did query 25 other agencies and kind of gives, gives their, the averages out there. At the bottom, you'll see 11 years frontline, six years reserve, 17 total. So that's roughly what's going on around us and a sprinkling of agencies across the nation. So I think our 15 and five is, we're as conservative as anyone. And we achieve that because I think the care that our personnel give the equipment. So I certainly appreciate that. NFPA recommendations that I've listed there are that 15 years frontline, five years reserved, and then decommissioned. And again, that NFPA certainly isn't a law that says if you don't follow this, you can't be a fire department. It is also a guide. But I would say that ISO rating that we just referred to, ISO would say, if you don't follow, if you don't meet NFPA standards, then that unit doesn't meet in the calculations. Not in years of service, but performance. And unfortunately, the rig that we have put out of service, it's to the point where it hasn't, it will not pass its pump rating anymore this, this year. It's seen its last day. So if you look at the bottom there, our, the action, the next two items are, the 1992 engine was 17 years frontline, another six reserve. We've had it in service 23 years, and we would declare it surplus. And the 1996 engine is 19 years, but we still anticipate another four-ish plus years of reserve service out of that rig. So that's another one. We will be exceeding that lifespan, and it's still... We are experiencing some mechanical failures with it. It's probably expected, so it definitely needs to go to that reserve, that reserve status. The next slide was simply, simply a graphic representation of those, of that data I gave you. You see, the red line is us, so years of frontline service. I think we're, you know, with, there's only a few agencies that kind of hit the years we do, and the total service years, we're pretty, pretty good standing as well. So I'm comfortable with that, with that, with our program there. Now, you see, well, you can't see those images too good. The, you know, from appearance, we do a pretty good job at maintaining the aesthetics of this equipment, and the red and the chrome and the waxing, and obviously that, that kind of care and internals. But here's just, I tried to show, here's some of the complexities of the things you don't see. What's underneath and all the gadgets and levers and pipe? What we found when we dug into the 1992 unit, why doesn't it pass pump test year? It's actually to the point where we are wearing through the plumbing and the piping. There's enough sand and grit that over that 23 years of high pressure in those, in that equipment, you eventually you wear through, so we have hit that time on it. It's a rig that we actually had declared couldn't leave the area because on a couple of strike teams, they basically made our guys, we were keeping the strike team because it had hit that point where it was just underpowered. So we said, hey, there's still some value to us in the city. There's still a good pump on that rig. Well, now we've lost that as well. So that's just kind of an idea of what's underneath the shine on some of those things on our older rigs. So that is the surplus. And why don't I go ahead and just give you the report on the second one, since they really go together and you can have your...
I have a question on the surplus.
Question on this one, okay.
When you declare it surplus and disposal, does that mean you take it out to the dump and drive it in?
So...
In the hole?
The typical fashion would be there's a government option. We haven't had very good luck in people coming here and getting much for anything. We have had some used apparatus dealers sell things out of the country. And also, we've seen them for other agencies sell people that aren't fire departments. There's other people that out there that would have some sort of a use for something that doesn't have to meet a critical need, you know, kind of status.
Well, my car blew up on the way to the airport, so does it get, does it get good mileage?
I might buy it so I can fill my pool.
I don't think you want this, this.
You need to use it to empty your pool when Jerry Brown comes snooping.
I think we'll do better, at least take a shot in trying to get some revenue for it. Another question.
Item 11.
So this is the purchase of a new engine. Now, our 1996 would essentially move back into that reserve position where this unit had been, and we'd be replacing the frontline, the frontline unit. Again, it's a unit that served well. We talked about it in service. You see the bids in the analysis section. The recommended vendor on this would be Smeal. And they were the second, second in the actual bid process. That is actually our current fleet vendor. There is, at least from our committee, the recommendation that we stay consistent with that product because of the performance. They've done very well. But also additionally, the service provider, the warranty provider is, it's about as close as we get to service in our town. It's off of Riverside exit off the Tin, and that's about the closest we can get for service. One other thing that came in the committee's report to me was Smeal uses what's a Spartan cabin chassis. There's a number of vendors that use that Spartan cabin chassis, so they're fairly available in terms of parts. Where some of the other product is, and it's an outstanding product as well, but it's its own from the ground up, and you, you know, you do pay for that sometimes in that follow-up service and parts and parts availability. Since we don't have a deep reserve pool for a small city, it's just the reality of smaller cities, the ability to get parts, get it repaired, and get it back to us is pretty, is pretty critical. Seen a Colton engine in our city a couple of times this year, and think, you know, we're a little slow probably on this, this replay, having that engine not pass the pump test kind of put us in a bad spot. But that just kind of demonstrates the need to get stuff repaired and back online for us. And so it was their thought that that cost difference in that bid over that 20-some year lifespan, we will gain the return on that. So that was the recommendation from our committee. The additional expenses on that are the typical radios, mobile data computers, some loose equipment. There's a contingency built into that. Sometimes during the, during the build, you'll go back and the engineers will show you, hey, we could do this different. It just gives us a little room to work. If we don't spend any of that, that comes back to us. There's also some discussion, there is a prepay option. We had a little bit of concern for if you prepay and don't get your products. We have experienced that in Public Works. However, just today received an email from the owner trying to say, hey, we're, we're, that's not the kind of company you're dealing with. We're one of the largest in the nation. We just bought LTI and USA Tinker, and more than gladly share our books with you if there's concern. So if you authorize the current agreement, that would actually have room for the city manager and I to look at that, what safety net would be in there if we did do the prepay. It would save us about 16.5 on this, on this agreement if we did exercise the prepay.
So no pictures?
Not yet, but they will, they will come. The engineers will draw up a schematic.
Are we going to take delivery on the new engine in time for the mayor to ride in the parade?
What parade?
There's no parade.
Oh, what happened with the parade?
It went the way of the, of the chamber. The chamber is...
That's right.
Is in...
No chamber, no parade.
It is in extremis. There is a chamber. It's just in extremis.
The agreement actually specifies 300 to 360 days of build time for that, so it'll be ready by the time we get that parade back online.
With the prepay option, do you get it sooner?
No, no.
So what's the incentive, then, just the cost?
$16,000.
Yes.
The problem they have is, we have experienced it, when things were booming, we purchased this out-of-state truck, the National Gas Truck. When things bust, the company went out of business, and we never see them again. So we, we lost the money we put down for that vehicle, so.
We will also likely seek Diana's input because, I mean, our dollars are invested. So 16.5 out of that, you know, what percentage is that versus our investment? And that'll probably help shape the decision a little bit, so. Any other questions?
I'll move it.
One more thing that I would like Jeff to mention is where the money coming from. Is we have been set aside, go ahead, Jeff, we have been set aside some money when we received the money back from the state?
Yeah, well, a couple of places. We've actually been talking, it's been a discussion in the subcommittee, the budget subcommittee for three-so years now. The primary source has been identified, and I think we've been protecting our million-dollar equipment reserve as the primary. But we did set up a secondary account. We, when we realized that this program, our apparatus replacement schedule is not, doesn't have a depreciation scheduled replacement program that would, that's really ideal. Understand that it didn't exist. I did give permission a few years ago to start setting aside little bits of money in our reimbursements. So when we go on mutual aid assignments to state and federal fires, like we've met a lot of this summer in Northern California, we get reimbursed for the personnel. We also get a apparatus and equipment reimbursement, so portion, and then there's an overhead portion. The personnel goes back into our overtime because we've expended our overtime budget for those assignments, so we replenish that account. Then that apparatus and equipment, we actually have started this little side savings account. And then the overhead just goes back into the general fund refunds and reimbursements. Additionally, I think it was 14, 15, we had some, we thought we might have some cost savings in personnel, and knowing this need was up, you may not remember, you actually approved the ability for us to move that money into that savings account. So as a result, we've saved $270,000 of that. So that's a good thing we did that, and we had a little nesting, so that'll cover roughly half of it.
I don't think I heard a second, so I'll second the motion. But if, once we approve this, I expect cheers from the fire department. Yeah, okay, that's a little better.
Do you live in Lumalanda? Do we expect some votes? Do you live in Loma Linda, or do we expect some votes? One of my questions is, I know there are some certain government regulations that you have to accept a low qualified bid, why doesn't that apply to fire apparatus?
This is not a public works project per se that requires that, but even in those situations, responsibility is an issue, and in this case, looking at the overall cost and other factors that Chief Bender mentioned as far as service and replacements and the possible prepayment, that all tip the balance, even on an economic standpoint. We have discussed that previously, as far as the need in this particular case.
I noticed you didn't get a bid from UGO?
I don't think they meet the spec.
So, I guess we can, we have a quorum, we can vote, so if we get three votes, it'll go forward. Is there any other discussion? Okay, there's a motion and a second, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We have three affirmative votes, that's unanimous of those in the room, it's approved. So, Ovi doesn't get to ride on the apparatus when it arrives for the parade, because he didn't vote for it.
More importantly, he doesn't get the votes from the fire.
He doesn't get the three votes. Okay, so, next is reports of councilmen.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Can we get a vote on the disposal of the asset as well?
I'll make a motion to dispose it.
To declare a surplus and authorize disposal?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The only question, and this could have been a personal thing, but I'll ask it real quick. In the interim, the year that we have to wait, we just run without a reserve engine, or we rely on our Colton partners, or how does that work?
So, they've been good partners. Again, it's, we're trying to fix as much here, Chief Valentin oversees our equipment, and he's working with Apparatus Solutions to get stuff done as rapidly as we can and keep it on the floor and running. One of the issues you saw was fire season and the Type III brush engine being gone. We are at times rolling out that Type III frontline, so it's a good and reliable unit. The challenge is, is it meets Type III standards, and when we're running to the commercial buildings, we run that, like those ISO requirements of a fifteen-hundred GPM pumper, or a Type III engine's a five-hundred GPM, so essentially, you know, it meets some bare minimums, and we're getting away with it, but we'll, then we're getting, Colton is actually playing a big role in backfilling when we need it. And we sent something, you know, their way a time or two as well, so we're trying to meet each other's needs there, so they've been a good partner in that, certainly.
Was that a second? Was that a yes vote?
Yes.
That was a yes vote, okay. So, we had a vote, and we got three votes, so it's approved. Okay, reports of councilmen?
I'd like to just make an observation, and then I'll, I'm gonna submit a couple of addresses, but I'm just cruising around from time to time through the city, I seem to be seeing more yards that are not only going brown, that's understandable, but the weeds are beginning to climb, and I think some people are looking at our drought conditions as an excuse to just do nothing with their yards. Do we follow up?
Send an email to me, text to me, let me know right now, I'll be happy to get a report.
Okay, does the code enforcer cruise around looking for problems at all, or he waits for people to report it?
Both.
Okay, okay. But I just want to be sure that, because it begins to affect property values at some point, and it's not fair to the neighbors. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was, I received an email from a citizen who reported that there's another home burglary in one of our nice neighborhoods, and one of the, one of the cameras on the property got a nice facial shot of one of the burglars, and I thought that was pretty good. I'm hoping we can do something with that, but, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm not sure if you have that photo or have contact with that person, but if they have not given it to the Sheriff's Department, by all means...
Yeah, I think they have, they stated that they had, that the Sheriff's Department took possession of the video.
Okay.
And it's very impressive. It was, got pictures of both of them, but one of them up close. He saw the camera and went, tried to hide from it, but it was too late.
A related question for the Sheriff's Department, I've also noticed, and maybe it's just odd time of year with Halloween coming or something, but up in the neighborhoods where I live, I'm seeing more of Stater Brothers carts that are ending up there and pushed up into the hills and bend over, and just last night, there was one sitting at the intersection of Mountain View and Lot, and are they reporting a lot of thefts of those things? Who's walking away with those things and taking them into neighborhoods and leaving them?
Yeah, I'm afraid I don't have a very good answer for you on that, I don't know off the top of my head. I know we have not received any thefts of those carts from Stater Brothers themselves.
Interesting.
Historically, they've been used by the homeless to get from to and from, however, when several...
Yeah, well, that's what had me worried, and frankly, I don't know that they're Stater Brothers carts, they could be Walmart carts, too.
Right.
Carts from someplace.
Right, when their penal codes were developed prohibiting the use or use of those carts off of private property, it curtailed a lot of those types of thefts, they started using strollers and such, but I will definitely look into that.
I don't know that it requires any special attention, but it's surprised me, just the last couple of weeks, I've noticed these things. So, Public Works then goes by and picks them up and returns them to...
No, we take it to the yard, usually we call, it's a company that all these vendors hire to pick up the shopping cart. So, somehow we call it, usually call it first, but even after they get it out, then Public Works will pick it up and take it to the yard.
Have we seen any increase in incidents of vagrants or anything like that?
The homeless population does seem to fluctuate in and out of Loma Linda. In fact, just this last week, the Sheriff's Department has developed this homeless team that goes around addressing homeless problems throughout the county, and I had them come over to Loma Linda last Thursday, Friday, and then over the weekend as well, just trying to identify those who are truly homeless and who would like some opportunities to get out of that situation. They contacted, I believe, about five to six different people, I am unaware of anybody who took advantage of those opportunities. Just last week, we've received some reports of some of the homeless sleeping on the City Hall property, that my, our deputies are kind of taking care of that.
You say City Hall property?
That's been going on for six months.
Yeah, we've had several people, but...
Right.
I always feel bad when I wake them up when I come into the building.
Please don't feel bad, and please don't, don't be afraid to call us to do that for you.
Truthfully, I haven't seen them for a while, but I know where they tend to congregate.
As I said, they do fluctuate, they come and go.
I think they found shower facilities one time, too, didn't they?
Are there any reports of officers? Okay, the city council today will be adjourning in the memory of David Lodarsky, who was a firefighter, I don't know his rank, but with the city of Colton, who was killed in a traffic accident last week, and he's someone who provided a lot of service to our city, as well as being our chief's first captain when he was, when he was a junior grade officer, so we're very sad to hear that happen, so we'll be adjourning in his memory. Our next items are the other two agendas, we have the successor agency to the Loma Linda redevelopment agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? No takers. The consent calendar, what's your pleasure? Okay, any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That's three affirmative votes, it's unanimous, that agenda is adjourned. Next, we have, if I can find it, yes, the housing authority, are there any items to be added or deleted to that agenda?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on this item? You guys, no speakers. Consent calendar? Okay, any discussion? Those in favor say aye? Three affirmative votes, that's unanimous, it's approved. Chair member reports, reports of officers. Okay, we're adjourned, thank you all for coming. I hope we...